In this meeting, the Board of Commissioners will take place electronically in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, specifically NJSA ten colon four hyphen nine point three. Notice of this meeting was given by one, public advertisement with sufficient notice herewith to the Home News Tribune in New Jersey. Two, filing written advanced notice of this meeting with the City Clerk's Office and three, posting this notice on the public website of the Housing Authority. During the meeting, participants, including members of the public, may be muted by the host. However, there will be an opportunity for them to participate and speak during the public portion of the meeting, where participants will be unmuted at their request. Meeting date and set time for special meeting, August twenty second, Thursday, twenty twenty four at five P M. Be so recognized. Thank you. At this time, roll call. Commissioner Wright. That.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Peddix.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Walde.
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Giorgiani.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dunlap.
Yes, here.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioner Colwell. I think Commissioner Colwell is absent. Okay, absent. If the record reflects, we have a number of Commissioners that satisfy the quorum. Mr. Hoffman, a resolution approving amended and restated option to enter into ground lease between the Housing Authority, City of New Brunswick, and Hoffman Housing Urban Renewal Associates. Let Mr. Hoffman take over from here.
Hello. What we're dealing with is an amended and restated option to enter into a ground lease on property owned by the Housing Authority, minus seventy-five Nielsen Street. The less see would be the Hoffman Housing Urban Renewal Associates LLC. There it's a affiliate of Penrose. There's nothing to do with me. And since Charlie's on the phone, I want to make that clear. Uh, the less see is a residential developer wishes to build sixty-six affordable housing units. The changes from the agreement you approved, which was the option on April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, are one on compensation. This provides for an upfront rental payment of two hundred thousand dollars if and when the lease is executed and four one hundred thousand dollar payments starting in year sixteen and then extending through year nineteen. The other changes are changes that I had suggested, and that's that the number of PHA assisted rental units will not be at the developer's sole discretion, but will have to be agreed upon by the Housing Authority. And also that if they come on the property to inspect the property or do any kind of test, that they provide insurance with the Housing Authority as an additional insured at the amount of one million dollars. Of one million dollars and and three like per car and three million dollars in the aggregate. Other than that, it's it's the change. It's the same as the option you approved on April, the the April the twelfth. The option ends on the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It has four conditions, which are the same as before. The project must get the necessary financing. The project must be approved by HUD and by HMFA. The project must comply with all relevant state and federal regulations. And the HUD must approve the PHA assisted units. And the boys must agree to an amended master development agreement. And that was enacted about, I think about fifteen years ago. I don't know whether Tanya Dempsey or anybody wants to wants to add anything to that.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. We do have the developers and their partners on the line. If anybody has any questions, or they'd like to say anything. Tanya?
I have a few questions.
I do too.
Yeah.
Okay. Let whoever wants to go first. I don't know. The developers want to go first, or I don't I don't mind jumping in.
Please, Commissioner.
Okay. Um, actually, the question, what very basic question, that is just for my own understanding, not to bust jobs. Was there a reason we had to have this as a special meeting tonight? That it couldn't wait until next Wednesday?
Well, I'll be having a meeting next Wednesday.
We we don't meet in August. We give the Commissioners a month off. But because of funding involved in this, Commissioner Peddix, it was incumbent upon us to try our best to get the group together. So we don't preclude them from getting the funding that they desperately need for this project to be completed and approved by. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hoffman did a good job of just comparing to the previous lease, which it sounds like there really aren't that many significant changes. It still seems like there's sixty-six affordable housing units. Built in this this project. And this lease term ends, is it correct that I read this correctly? December fifteenth, twenty twenty-four?
His options, his options. If they don't exercise the option to go into the lease, it's over. The lease is a fifty year lease.
Got, okay. All right. Gotcha. And and just because I'm a numbers guy, Mr. Hoffman, you you kind of made it sound like it's four years that we were going to get the hundred thousand dollars, but the document that I have here seems to say five years.
Well, that was a document that that was corrected.
It was corrected. This one looks like it came out of somebody's binder. So that's that's incorrect of what was sent to the board.
Well, I I was advised. I had I didn't negotiate the compensation. I was just advised by the consultants that that the compensation was four years, not five. Starting in the sixteenth year.
Okay. Thank you, John. Okay.
Yeah, and just to just to, this is Tanya Dempsey. Hi, it's nice to meet you all. Um, I have been advising the Housing Authority on this transaction. The reason why we have sized the upfront payment and the notes is because per the MDA, you are entitled to some percentage of the cash flow of that property. And so instead of getting it every year, we have been able to make an upfront payment of two hundred thousand at construction closing, which we believe is in the best interest of the Housing Authority. And the remainder really that you were, you know, essentially entitled to per the MDA was really for years, you know, really for four years instead of five. And so that was just a that was in oversight on 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 our part, and we should have caught it before. But you know, again, the NPV of the cash flow versus what you're actually getting now is a net benefit to the Housing Authority. And then further, further to that, you asked about affordability. Yes, there are the same number of affordable units, but I think we did add affordability to this project. So by way of forty-eight extra forty-eight units. So I just wanted to flag that also.
Forty-eight additional units, are you saying?
Yeah, we we, the Housing Authority originally, and and maybe it's not additional per se, the I believe, Noah, most of the building is now affordable. Is that?
It says all the.
Yeah.
The units are affordable.
It was supposed to be a hundred percent.
So what you're saying.
Can you hear me? This is Noah from Penrose.
Go ahead, Noah.
No, go ahead.
Hey, that, yeah, I thought I would jump in and just clarify some of the the numbers being thrown around. So this property was and continues to be one hundred percent affordable. What Tanya and her colleagues at CSG were able to do, which has really allowed this project to spring forward. The closing, in addition to the financing that we're doing, is um they were able to secure or or have us enter the Faircloth to Rad program, which takes the PHA assisted units that the Housing Authority.
Right.
That was that was in the original MDA, which is a, you know, sort of a a a program from a different era that doesn't isn't as successful in today's high cost environment. And and changes those those vouchers that the that the residents would get to a a fair market rent. But when Tanya was saying it increases the affordability, we were able to add more public housing units to the project. It's still it was still one hundred percent affordable before, but now there will be more dedicated PHA units. And those residents will be paying thirty percent of their income towards the project. But the projects will now be able to get more subsidy from HUD, which helps support the feasibility of the project. And as Tanya mentioned, the NDA required a percentage of the cash flow. And through through conversations with the Housing Authority and and CSG, we structured it in a way so that it's a net benefit to the Housing Authority, because if you got a certain percentage over thirty years, you you actually wouldn't even be, this is giving you a little bit more, and it's giving you it in a very accelerated fashion. So I I think everybody was happy that we can make this work. Give the Housing Authority what was agreed upon in the MDA and more from a time value of money perspective and total dollars perspective. I'm and hopefully that answers some of the questions.
I I I'm just a little confused on on the number of units, if you don't mind. We started out with sixty-six.
Yeah.
Heard that we have forty-eight more, so that's one hundred and fourteen units.
No, 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 no. One second. Chairman, yeah, 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 Chairman Wright. Unfortunately, I lost my video signal, so I'm going to be communicating via the phone. To Commissioner Peddix's question at the bottom of the memorandum from John Hoffman, it talks about identifying expressly how many PHA controlled units would be inside of this project. I believe it's going to be sixty-six units, no matter what. It's just what portion of those, a direct number of those are going to be PHA units that you brought over in this Faircloth to Rad program. So I'd like to drill down on what that number is going to be.
Yeah.
Correct. And so oh, sorry to talk over everybody. I know there's a little bit of a delay. So to answer to answer every all the Commissioners' questions. So, right, it's sixty-six total units. One hundred percent are affordable. And the Faircloth to Rad vouchers that we're getting, to Commissioner Wright's direct point, is is forty-eight. And that number was derived from the original amount of PHA units in the MDA, plus the plus the project-based vouchers that the Housing Authority have already committed. So when you add those together, that's where we get the forty-eight. So of the sixty-six total units, sixty-six will be affordable. Of those sixty-six affordable, forty-eight are dedicated directly to the Housing Authority. If that if that makes sense.
Good. Thank you. So I guess as long as it's okay with Mr. Manfredi and Mr. Hoffman and and HUD approves it, I guess I'm okay with it, certainly.
Yeah, but don't we have to define that? Because it doesn't say anything about the forty-eight and eighteen left over.
But it says that we have to agree to the final number.
Excuse me?
It says that we have to agree to the final number of PHA units.
It looks like we have agreed already, because the way he explained it, forty-eight are PHA assisted and eighteen, well, the total of affordable, but forty-eight are PHA assisted. So can't we define that now?
Well, we sorry, I don't know that I should be speaking. Right, so so the question then is the question then is can we agree to that number forty-eight right now? Have that be the number that goes forward? Is that what you're saying, Yergo?
Yes. Yeah, but it's not it's not in the agreement, though. It can change. They can say thirty-five in ten years. So that's why I'm saying, you know, we have to live out of the sixty-six, we have to say forty-eight is a PHA unit.
The forty-eight units will have a, I'm sorry, the forty-eight units will have a half contract that will last twenty years and will need to be like will automatically be renewed in perpetuity. So I don't think you.
But the way it says is, lease equals the project's inclusion of some PHA assisted rental units.
No, no, that's been changed. It's been changed, but we have to agree to the final number.
So.
Yeah, you you're good.
Yeah, but if if we approve it now, it doesn't show the numbers. That's why I'm asking that question.
This is Noah from Penrose. I just wanted yes, I understand what you're asking. I just wanted to jump in. This is Noah from Penrose again. So this is just the option to enter into the ground lease. This isn't the final ground lease. And this also requires an amendment to the master developer agreement that currently exists, which also has to happen prior. So I think if if it's okay with you, or if it makes sense with everybody, keeping this document at that 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 number has to be agreed to. And and the ground lease will still have to be signed by the Housing Authority and the MDA updated and approved by HUD before closing. So there's no, this this document isn't the end all be all, I guess, of what I'm trying is what I'm trying to say. And there's still a number of documents that the Housing Authority has to sign and approve and give to HUD for approval before this deal closes. So I think that would be the point in time to solidify that number or memorialize it. I don't know that maybe here is is it's necessary, but I I would leave that up to everybody else for this fact.
Mr. Manfredi, you know why, why I ask that question? It says some PHA assisted rental units, you know, some can be anything.
That's agreement.
Okay.
Now says that we have to agree to the number. Not some anymore. It says that we have to agree to the number.
Okay.
Director, can I add some information? Maybe helpful to the board, because we handled the the first part of this, and the key was for the board at that time, as Mr. Hoffman indicated, was to adhere to the terms of the original MDA. Obviously, any changes to that are not before you tonight. And if there were any further changes, it has to go, as Mr. Hoffman indicated, to HUD and back to the board, which is exactly where, if I may say, as Mr. Hoffman said, exactly where you want it to be. You want to let it progress, and then it would have to go back to HUD for approval and back to the board.
Okay. The other.
Not you, so you're not deviating from the MD, original MDA, which is is critical to your decision tonight.
All right. Another question I have for Noah. The rental payment is two hundred thousand plus four years, hundred thousand dollars each, about six hundred thousand in total, right?
Yes.
Okay, now have we taken the value of money in about, you know, because it's it's after the expiration of the credit in fifteen years that we start collecting the hundred thousand? Have we taken value of money at that time? Because hundred thousand minus hundred thousand.
Yes, so you're good. Tanya, Tanya, I think alluded to that briefly, and Tanya, maybe you want to speak to that, but but that that analysis. So so essentially, the two hundred thousand dollars, I guess, from my from my short memory, because we talked about this a few weeks ago with Tanya and the Housing Authority. The two hundred thousand dollars at closing represents roughly the first fifteen years of the Housing Authority's share of cash flow day one, before the project is even you know, before shovel has even broken the ground. And then so so you're getting fifteen years of cash flow day one. And then the rest of it, and even a little bit more than I, you know, otherwise you technically be entitled to, is in that is in that four years of one hundred thousand dollars that that would be from years fifteen to thirty. So so the the NPV, you know, even though we haven't done the no one's no one's doing the math, you can kind of kind of get a sense that that's that's a much better time value of money benefit to the Housing Authority than if it was over a thirty year period.
Oh, okay. So the two hundred thousand is for fifteen years. So if you divide it by then, you know, it might be less than a hundred thousand a year. Okay. All right, I understand now.
Can I do a follow up on that? How did we come up with the numbers that the the two hundred thousand upfront, which comes to, I guess, about a little more than thirteen thousand dollars a year?
Yeah.
Um, so there is a um, there is a a thirty year pro forma that we have to provide to all of our lenders and financing parties based on the rents and expenses of the project. And then the original MDA says the Housing Authority is entitled to ten percent of of cash flow after expenses and debt service. And so you know, every year isn't the same. So so Commissioner, you said about thirteen thousand a year. Every every year, the 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 free cash flow is a little bit different. And if you take ten percent of that and say this is the Housing Authority's share, and then add up that fifteen years, it's about two hundred thousand dollars. So instead of getting, you know, thirteen thousand dollars a year, let's say, every year between between twenty twenty-five or actually, it'd be two years if you from when the project's complete. So you're getting two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five. When if you got it through cash flow, you would be getting thirteen thousand a year for fifteen years, starting in year twenty twenty-seven, let's say. So when you factor in the two years of construction, that you're that you're getting that two hundred thousand dollars even before cash flow from from revenue from rent start. I think it's even a little bit of a better deal than maybe a an NPV would otherwise.
I might be a little dense. Is it upon the final construction or the commencement of instruction that we get the two hundred thousand?
Signing the lease.
Signing the lease.
Commencement of construction, yes.
Execution of the lease.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
I have one question for Mr. Hoffman. Article five termination?
Yes.
Number one, it says, the agreement should immediately terminate upon any of the following. Number one is the execution of a ground lease between the lesser and least see. That I don't understand.
Well, we're going to have a ground lease.
Okay.
For the property.
Yeah.
If they agree with all different conditions. You know, insurance assignments, defaults. This is just an option to enter into a ground lease.
So so if we if we execute the ground lease, that's cause for termination, is that what we're saying?
If they don't, if these conditions are met in Article three, they agree will be terminated and there'd be no ground lease. If they're all met after December fifteenth, we'll be negotiating a ground lease and bringing that back to you. But the ground lease will happen and the two hundred thousand dollar payment and the other the other payments.
The other conditions. Yeah. Execution of ground lease between lesser and least see.
Yergo, I think what we're saying is this is only the option. Once the actual ground lease comes into place, the option goes away, because now we have the actual document. Paraphrase, Mr. Hoffman.
Okay, all right, okay, that's that's a bit of, okay, very good. Okay, that's that's my last question, I think. That's my last question. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioners, anything else? At this time, to be fair, there's some other people out here, and I'm going to open up for members of the public to comment now before we take a vote on to extend this further. Anyone from the public would like to say anything? And Commissioners, if you think of anything else after I'm done with the public, you can please at any time interrupt me and express your concerns or support, so on.
Yeah, we have to make sure we correct that five years to four years.
Yes.
Yeah.
Just to make that was brought to my attention.
It's corrected. It is a corrected.
Okay, thank you.
Corrected document that Dan has.
Okay.
Public? Somebody's got their hand raised. I don't know who.
Hi there.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I, Mr. Cradville, go ahead.
Yes, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Should I be only addressing questions about the resolution? Or is this the time that I should also ask my general questions?
Is it about this topic? This is all we're talking about this evening?
Correct.
I mean, what do you want to talk about the weather? I I don't understand. Like, what what do you mean?
No, no, of course not. I I I wanted to speak about Housing Authority business that's other than this.
Well, this is a special meeting about this situation, about the funding of this project and moving it forward. So we can provide affordable housing to the good residents who've been waiting a long time at this project. This is what we're talking about this evening.
I get it. So you're telling me there won't be a general public, I'm an opportunity for me to talk about other Housing Authority business?
No. I think what we're saying is this this is the opportunity for it, and we'd like to keep it on task.
Yep.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cradville. Mr. Manfredi, would you like to say something? I see your hand up.
Yes. Subject to the time limitations, actually, Mr. Cradville, as a member of the public, can make any comment he wishes.
I I want to make sure we're we're okay on that then. So, Mr. Cradville, go ahead, please. Share with us your concerns about anything you want to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Manfredi and Mr. Toto. I wanted to first ask about the one-year plan, the annual plan. And when and where is the hearing on it?
It's going to be in September. I don't have the date right now off the top of my head, because I didn't come prepared to speak about that, but I I can like.
Okay, I'll follow. I'll follow up with you. Yeah, that that's fine. I'll follow up with you. I just I couldn't find it anywhere on the website. So I think that's an issue. I also don't understand the logic. I'm assuming that it's going to be like it was last time, where it's in-person only in the middle of the workday at Seven Van Dyke Avenue. And I just have trouble understanding why the Housing Authority has meetings like this. The board meetings on Zoom only. You know, virtual only, and then the annual plan hearing is kind of the opposite. It's in-person only. I don't know why why not just sort of have both like we did that one time, and it was so successful. But I I understand, you know, what's already scheduled is scheduled, and I just I will follow up to get the date for that, and I'll try to attend if my schedule allows. The only other point I wanted to make was just disappointed in the Authority website. You know, we're here tonight on a redevelopment matter, or at least, you know, a matter involving you know, a a a project with a fixed location. And it's really hard to get any information about what's going on with it. You go to the redevelopment section of the website, and there's still just the same three paragraphs there. There's no specifics about any project. And, you know, this one included, you can't really easily find out what's the status of the project, who's the developer, you know, how many units is it going to be? Where is it? You know, that information, you have to kind of like dig very deeply into the documents on the website. And I'm suggesting that the Authority would be better off if you just presented the information upfront, especially if you've got an agenda item coming up. So to that end, I wanted to, you know, ask the Authority, you you postponed a hearing on a big building, the I believe the developer's name was LM. But it's Edgewood Properties wants to build a skyscraper, basically, at the corner of New and Livingston in New Brunswick, and it was on your agenda last month. It's been delayed till next month. Can you make a commitment that you will have the plans available to the public on your website before you actually take that up as a board?
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for bringing that to our attention as well.
So can I get that commitment that there'll be
I I.
Plans available on the web?
I'm just hearing your comments and and I'm we'll we'll get back to you on that.
Okay, well, I hope I hope what I'm asking for sounds reasonable, and I hope that you'll be able to make it happen. And I'll follow up tomorrow to to find out the date of that hearing. And I do thank the board for hearing me out and you know, letting me comment remotely.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Anyone else from the public have anything to say at this time? Commissioners, anything else before? I'll be asking for a a motion in a second to move this forward. Okay, we're good. Chair?
Yes.
I'll need a motion in a second before we take roll call. Move.
I'll second.
Mr. Giorgiani seconds, Mr. Walde moves. Thank you. Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Peddix? Yeah.
Yes.
They silenced you, I see. Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giorgiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunlap?
Yes.
And Dr. Colwell's absent. Let the record reflect, the motion passes. At this time, I want to thank Tanya and Noah from Penrose for getting on here. I know it was a tough month and Commissioners tremendous. I'm sorry that we had to come back and bring you guys in from this month. But at this time, Mr. Manfredi is going to lead us into an executive session. I have an issue that we have to talk about. Manfredi's gonna lead us into an executive session. I have an issue that we have to talk about, not related to this. And uh, Mr. Hoffman, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Manfredi.
Thank you. Chairman, if I thank you. Chairman, if I may ask just for a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters of attorney-client privilege, I anticipate that we will be in closed session for no, no greater than ten minutes. And that no act.
And I motion.
I second.
Okay, so motion by sorry, Wright, second by Medina Hernandez. A roll call, Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Peddix?
Yes.
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Giorgiani?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunlap?
Yes.
Okay, and Dr. Caldwell's absent, motion passes. Uh, Mr. Manfredi, so we're gonna go into executive session?
Yes, we just need to.
You have to take it, right?
You have to take it to another room.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try that right now.
Or I believe you can place members of the public in any, in a waiting room temporarily, Dan, and then bring them back when we're done.
Okay. Fine. Put in waiting room.